Good evening and welcome to tonight's. One moment, please, while I echo. It's a Zoom echo. Testing. All right. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is a regular study session for Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. The time right now is 7:00 PM. Let me go ahead and ask that our clerk Wykoff, please call the role.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members present in establishing a quorum are council members Fulcher, Beaumont, Hamford, Walker, Fisher, and Scarborough.
Thank you. And we'll announce for the record when Councilmember Campbell comes in. I do not recall that he had indicated that he would be absent this evening. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That would be the Pledge of Allegiance. Vanessa, Councilmember Fulcher, please lead us tonight. Thank you.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item that we have on the agenda this evening is public comments. Okay. So we do have a public hearing this evening as well. The first item, public comments, is there for an opportunity to speak to things that are not otherwise subject to a public hearing. So if anybody wants to come forward and say anything, we don't require that you actually sign in, even though we have the sign-in sheet. So if somebody's interested in coming forward and talking about something that is not on the agenda for a public hearing this evening, go ahead and raise your hand. Okay. So why don't the person in the back come on forward? And then we'll go to the next one. And before you start speaking, I've got to read a script.
Okay.
But the lawyers told me to. All right. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This is a limited opportunity for people to speak to the council during this council meeting. First and two, Council Rules of Procedure. Spoken public comment is limited to in-person comment only and must comply with the standards set forth in Council Rules. Comments are limited to three minutes. Information on where to send written comments is on tonight's agenda and on the screen. We're now going to begin the public comment. So what I'm going to ask is that you go ahead and state your name and association with the city. Don't need to tell me your address, but just how do you, how are you part of the city?
Okay.
And then we'll, when you're done with that, we'll start the three-minute timer.
Okay. So my name is Chris Peliquin. I'm a resident, actually, right over here by the hospital in this 182nd Avenue area right here. And the comment that I would like to make is basically addressing the rezoning of that neighborhood. And the biggest thing to us is, first off, we were never aware. We've had multiple contacts through my aunt here who's made us aware of this because she's attended many of these meetings. And through her communication with the city, they claim to have sent out postcards, which I can speak for, not only myself, but a couple of my neighbors that are around here that I've spread this information to, and none of us have received it. And I would think that of the group that I would talk to, maybe one of them had gotten it if we had actually, or kept it and was aware of it, but none of them were aware of said rezoning. This is a big concern for us because a lot of people that I have on my street right here that are present right here have either just bought a home with intent that this is going to be their forever home, or have been in that neighborhood for 30-plus years. So you're going to end up either pushing those people out of there, because my understanding is that it's rezoned for mixed use with the intent of potential apartments in there. And outside of that, even potential taxpayers. So businesses on the bottom and apartments at the top. So it's also our understanding, which, when you bring in an influx of people, then creates a risk for the community that's there. And I know that, speaking not only for my street, but the rest of our neighborhood there, that there's a lot of people that have been there for 20-plus years. And so uprooting them, or at least having that huge influx of people, is going to cause a rift for them as well. So I am not for it. I just want that on record, that, you know, it's going to cause a lot of mayhem for not only myself, but those neighbors that may want to make a comment as well. But yeah, I am, just want to be on public record that I'm not for it.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
Yep.
Okay. Please let the record show that Councilmember Campbell entered chambers at about 7:03 PM. Good evening. Okay. Susan? You had your hand up. You might want to pull the microphone down just a little bit. Thank you.
Do you know who I am?
I need you to say for the record.
Okay, for the record, I'm Jensen Peliquin. And something that, I'm in the same area as Chris, obviously.
Testing. All right, go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to add on an addendum to what he's saying. Also, increasing our taxes in today's economy is already going to be a huge thing. So changing our taxes into a mixed-use bracket is just not attainable, not for us, who are both public workers in the community, but also for, like Chris was saying, a lot of our neighbors are people who have been there for a long time, fixed incomes. And that's just not, I see it as like rob Peter to pay Paul, like, because we chose to live in this neighborhood that is single-story ramblers. That is great for families. And to take that away from us in order to build a big apartment complex or condos, it almost just feels like rob Peter and pay Paul for no reason, when there's plenty of other areas within Monroe that we can expand without taking away from the current places. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Susan?
Hello, I'm Susan Davis. I'm with Windermere. I've worked in Monroe for the last 29 years in real estate, and I know the area pretty well. I have three areas in the, in the proposed comp plan that I have concerns about. The first one is the triangle area, south of the hospital. That's all going to be rezoned into a mixed use. And, and that is going to change that neighborhood significantly. And I think you've heard tonight that, that people haven't been given notice, proper notice, that there's going to be a significant change to the zoning and use in their neighborhood. So that, I feel like, is a big concern. There's two other areas, Roosevelt Neighborhood, the mixed-use node, that's way out at the end of the city. That neighborhood is all rural and agricultural land, and I'm pretty darn sure that those neighbors don't know anything about this. They'd be super surprised if they were to find out. The Chain Lake node, same thing. I did take a look at the housing targets and job growth targets, and I also found out what the allocations were from Kate &amp; Lance, about how many units were identified for those particular areas. For the triangle piece, there's 40 residences and 40 businesses. For the Roosevelt area, there's 134 jobs. And for the, sorry, Chain Lake, 40, 40 houses, 40 jobs. Roosevelt is 134 jobs. And the triangle piece, where Chris and Jensen are, is 40 jobs. Nope, sorry, that was 75. Sorry, I think I got my numbers messed up. Anyway, the point is, is that if you take those out of the proposed action allocations, there's, you can take those out, and it's, there's still enough jobs, there's still enough housing units to meet the targets. So I would also suggest that you give better notice to those areas. A boards with common questions of what people might ask, you know, would be helpful. And I've shared information with Kate &amp; Lance in an email about several of the questions that I have and what people might ask. So please do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments under public comments? All right. Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That's public hearing. Public hearing is this item number 5.1. Public hearing for proposed code amendments to Monroe Municipal Code, MMC Chapter 2222, Downtown Commercial Zoning District, and MMC Chapter 22.12, Definitions with Planner Bright. Thank you. Amy, I was noticing that the speaker, you could kind of hear it back there, but not over here?
Yes.
There you go.
Testing. Okay.
So why don't you go ahead and get, get started again?
Start over?
Yeah, thank you.
Perfect. It's okay. There's multiple items I'd like to enter into the record before we get started. The first is public comment. It's an email, I believe, all the council received, from Jamie Docsetter, dated October 8th, 2024. The second is an update to Attachment 1, which is the draft amendments to the downtown code, MMC 2222. The third is updates to draft amendments of definitions, 2212 MMC. The next is updates to the draft ordinance that was attached to your packet. The next is adding, it's an, it's an update to the Planning Commission findings of fact, and it's just this, with the signature from the chair. And the last one is this, these slides that you see here, that you'll be seeing here today. Just as a reminder, this is, these are amendments to the downtown area. And, and the downtown zone is divided into four neighborhoods. The, the orange on the far east is East Downtown area. The light yellow to the west is Residential Neighborhood. The darker orange in this, or the, the orange in the center is the Historic Main Subzone. And then the red in the center is intended to be the Downtown Promenade. A visual reminder of where the zone begins is, is shown here on the screen. When we're driving down Main Street, it is right before we get to Candido's and the parking, the, the car lot. Not yet. And to the north, the boundary is at the railroad, sorry, again, this is actually the east, the, the east, the boundary is at the railroad tracks. And from the north, the boundary is also at the railroad tracks. And from the south, it is at McDougal Street. So that's where the downtown commercial area begins. There's been some confusion in the past where the Historic Main and the Promenade neighborhoods are. So with the Promenade, it is located on the first floor Main Street businesses. So in red, you can see where the Promenade neighborhood is. And then the yellow above shows where the Historic Main neighborhood is. We're just going to go through a series of slides showing different areas of the downtown, indicating where the Promenade and the Historic Main are. All right. So one of the, moving on to the proposed changes, our current downtown planning area map is on the left. And there's, as I mentioned, there's some confusion over where the Promenade is. And so we are proposing a new downtown planning area map on the right, and it shows the Promenade in the hashed area. And then also, in your packet, it shows much clearer, a new description of that, so everyone can see, the community can see exactly where that area is. And so also what this does is it keeps that orange under, underlayment on there, which, so that way the upstairs businesses aren't seen as Promenade, they're still Historic Main. Other proposed changes is to the land use table in 2222050, and that is to add conditional uses for courts, government administration buildings, police stations, and U.S. post offices within the downtown Promenade. As you can see, there's a footnote eight shown next to all of those conditional uses. And that footnote is requiring that those conditional uses shall remain open to the public a minimum of five days and totaling 25 hours per week, except holidays or extenuating circumstances. Another proposed change is to remove membership organizations as an accessory use in the Promenade and add it as a permitted use within Historic Main. I know it's hard to see on the screen, but there is a dash through the A for accessory uses. This is the only, this A being removed is the only use that we are intending to remove as, as a use in our land use table in these amendments. The next amendment is to add a new use called Visitor's Center. We are proposing to allow this as a permitted use within the Historic Main, East Downtown, and within the Promenade. And on your screen, there's a lengthy definition of what a Visitor's Center is. So the next amendment is to add banquet, conference, and event facilities within the downtown area. And staff is aware that there's some confusion over the proposed code amendments and how we regulate meetings. It has never been the intent of these amendments to regulate meetings. And to clarify this, instead of adding the two new uses you see on the bottom, banquet, meeting, reception hall, major and minor, we are, we've decided to change the name of them to better clarify, banquet, conference, event, facility, major and minor.
Yep. I was just going to come to you, Councilmember, and for. What do you mean? You mean the, in the packet or online? What do you mean by online? Did you clap twice over there? I just missed it. Okay. All right. Go ahead, Amy.
So as you can, as we talked about in the workshop, we brought forward the, the uses you see on the bottom of the screen, but with the new changes that we're adding, that we're proposing now, it doesn't change the intended use, but it's, the intent is to clarify what the use is. And as a reminder, these are two new proposed uses. These do not currently exist. And interestingly enough, banquet and conference centers are not permitted in Monroe. So in response to the comment letter we received, we're now proposing, we are not proposing to remove banquet spaces from the downtown. We are actually adding banquet spaces within the downtown. And as you can see on the screen, major facilities, we're proposing conditionally within Historic Main and conditionally within East Downtown, and also minor facilities conditionally within the residential neighborhood and permitted within Historic Main and East Downtown. And I just want to clarify, we are not trying to, in any way, regulate how someone operates their permitted business. We're not saying you can't have a meeting there. This is, this is specifically intended for someone who has a business license for a banquet, conference, event facility. This is not in any way regulating other types of businesses. New changes, since I last brought this to you, again, the title here has changed, and then we just clarified by removing the word "meetings" in the definition, and then changing it from "hall" to "facility." And for, same for the minor definition, removing meetings, changing it to "facility," and then changing the name at the bottom. This is just a reminder of the current timeline we have. We are now on October 15th, our public hearing and first reading. And then we are looking to bring this back for a second reading on October 22nd.
Thank you.
I have a couple more.
I'm used to the schedule thing.
So here, as I mentioned, I, I entered a few items into the record. This is the draft, these are changes I've made since the draft ordinance went out to you in your packet. And as I mentioned before, I'm just proposing to change those names. Again, banquet, conference, event facility, major and minor. And then also on page six of your ordinance, just updating those definitions as we, as I just mentioned.
All right. Thank you. All right. So I turn to council for questions for clarification, then we'll move for public comment for the public hearing. Any questions from the council? Go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you for the presentation. One question I have, I, I just keep stumbling over this major and minor issue that we're delineating, you know, 49 people and then 50, over 50. And I feel like if we're delineating between major and minor uses, and one is a conditional use, what does that mean for the property owner or business? What do they need to do?
So the, from a process standpoint, an outright permitted use, the only permit or review that you're going to have to go through is a building permit. For a conditional use, it requires a land use review, which is, it, it's a public hearing that goes before the hearings examiner, so it is a little bit of a longer process. Timing-wise, they're typically about three months to, to do that. And so the proposal had been to differentiate those two based on the occupancy of the, of the use.
And Director Bailey, for the conditional use permit, is there a public notice and see then things like that involved as well?
There is, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, thank you. I'm, I'm trying to understand, it seems to me that that is a lot of work for staff, for the business owner. Is there, can you explain to me why this is important? Don't we have occupancy standards for code when you've got a certain number of people, right, for an event? Don't they have to go through some sort of required steps anyway for occupancy if they're having an event? To me, it sort of seems like we're asking too much of the business owner or a three-month wait period. I, can you help me understand why you feel this is necessary?
So the, so the occupancy is, is an element that comes from the building code. And realistically, if you, just as an example, if, if it were an outright permitted use and you were, and you were going into, into a space that was already, that was not already established as an event center, for example, which we don't, we have one that's, that's grandfathered in, but so typically, it's, it's probably going to be a new location. You would still have to go through the building permit process. So that step, so that step would be, and there is a threshold, the reason it's 49 and below and 50 and above is those thresholds come out of the building, out of the building permit, I mean, out of the building code and so on.
So it is necessary, or would that meet the need of whatever this, you know, 50 and up requirement is? To me, it seems that the two sort of cancel each other out. Don't they have to go through some process anyway?
You would, you would have to go through the building permit process. So there, so there would be a review based on life and safety related to that occupancy. So there, there would be a requirement to go through that other step as well. That would, and if it's a conditional use, you're going to get the land use permit first and then go through the building permit. If it's an outright permitted use, then the land use review is not required.
Okay.
Is that the answer to your question?
I, I think it does. And then I just had a couple of other questions for you. One of them certainly was about the business hours, and I'm just wondering how enforceable that may be. For instance, conditional uses within the downtown promenade shall be open to the public a minimum of five days and a total of 25 hours per week. If we're looking to keep downtown open for business during daytime shopping hours, I don't feel this is as specific as it could be. And, you know, what's to keep a business owner from saying, okay, well, my 25 hours are going to be between midnight and 3:00 AM, you know, cumulatively? I, I feel like that is something that, the intent is there, and I understand why the intent is there, and it's to create open businesses in our downtown. But the way it's, it's entered here seems to me that there's a lot of wiggle room, and I just wonder if you and, and Ms. Bright might be able to address that as well.
So the intent is based on the promenade? And the, and, and the overall intent of the promenade is to have businesses that are open for, to have pedestrian traffic, that they're open for a large portion of the time, so that they're, they're not just closed, you know, lights-out sort of, sort of businesses, particularly during the day or night. So when, when we originally went through this, and we, we had gone through the Planning Commission and, and had come to city council, and then it, we, there were some questions that came up about how are we making sure, how are we maintaining that intent of the promenade? And those comments came from, we went to EDAB, Economic Development Advisory Board. They, they had brought up that issue. It also had come up at Planning Commission, and I think that there were some questions at, at city council. And so staff went back and was trying to take those comments and come up with a mechanism to try to ensure that the, that the businesses or the uses that went in there were still going to be able to meet that intent for the promenade. So that's where, that's where these hours of being open and days, and it, admittedly, it, it could be a little tricky to enforce. I think that it would, it's, it's a conditional use, and so there is some review of, of the type of business. And so that land use permit would have the, the conditions in there to say that you would need to be open for, for those amount of hours and, and during the week. So it could, it could be a little, it could be a little nuanced, for sure.
Okay. I also would like to, oh, go ahead, sorry.
So we are only proposing those open business hours for the civic uses. So that's courts, government administration buildings, police stations, and U.S. post offices. It does not apply.
That helps.
To other businesses in the promenade.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And I also would like to commend staff for addressing and Planning Commission also. And I think this is a healthy dialogue that we have with our business owners in town. I appreciate everyone that's here tonight. We're talking, and that's really important. Things aren't working as well as they could, and I appreciate that we are addressing this and we're creating some dialogue, and everyone is able to share their feelings, and some changes are being made. And we know that this wasn't necessarily your team, that these were long ago adopted codes, but I really appreciate what's happening here, and I think our city will be the better for it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Director Bailey, and then we'll go to Councilmember Walker. Director Bailey, could you or Planner, or Planner, Amy?
You can call me Planner, right?
Could one of you just explain a little bit more on point? Because I know that you addressed the building code part as it relates to a larger venue, but could one of you talk just a little bit more about the conditional use process itself? Usually, the reason why there's a public notice is to let neighbors know that, hey, there might be a use here that's going to generate more than 50 people, and therefore parking's going to be impacted, there might be noise, there might be these other things, just so that there's an understanding that it goes beyond the building code and, and why a conditional use permit would be there, or what the criteria would be that a hearing examiner would consider when taking evidence and testimony from people. Because it's more than just a building code requirement. I think that that's, that will help answer the question, I think, that you were going for.
Yeah. In that, in that review. Yeah, in that review, it is noticed, as any public hearing it would be. So that does provide information to people in the vicinity that this use is going to occur. And there's open public comment, and anyone can come and make comment at the public hearing as well. So the hearings examiner is looking at the criteria for conditional use. And in general, it's looking to make sure that there are no negative impacts by the proposed use on the surrounding area. That could be noise, light. There is parking, but I would, one of the issues in the downtown is we don't require parking. So it's a little, it's the hearings, because the hearings examiner is making sure that the proposal meets the city's code. So if, and it could meet that depending on mitigations, which would be conditions that would go into that land use approval. So it is an open process. It does provide opportunity for people to make comment, both in writing and in person, to express their concerns. And it provides an opportunity for the hearings examiner to create conditions if there's any impacts that need to be addressed. There's an opportunity to put conditions on that use in order to meet the overall intent of the code.
So to be fair to say that if through this process, the hearing examiner hears from the community that there is a concern that is still within the scope of the law, of course, but might not be on point with being addressed in the code, that they could apply a condition, hence a conditional use permit, where they could apply a condition to help address issues brought forward by the community.
Correct.
Okay, so if you had a 100-person banquet facility come in there, and you had concerns about any number of the things that you just brought up, conditions could be applied to it so that it's operated in a way that should work better with the downtown. There it goes. Yes. Okay, cool. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Walker, go ahead.
Thank you, guys, for all the presentations to go into further depth on this. When I first started on planning commission, and still to this day, this stuff, it can make my eyes glaze over, and it's really difficult to understand. And that's having four years of experience now. So I can only imagine how the public feels when they hear the minor and major and conditional use. What I am taking away from this, and actually, first, I just want to make sure that there is a simple understanding. Major permit uses. So this is going to be if I am coming into the downtown, and let's pretend that there's a space available, I want to open a roller derby facility. I would apply for something. And I want to have banquet or meetings there for my roller derby alumni organization, after hours, or not after hours, but as a secondary use of the facility. Those are the permits that we're talking about for, that is a use that would be acceptable. I wouldn't need to get a conditional permit for it. I could have it, right? If I'm a roller derby and I have some meetings there sometimes.
So the planner in me is going to not say, yes, you can open a roller derby in the downtown.
Yes, no, sorry.
But yes.
I'm just trying to explain what a permitted use is. Let's say this is anywhere else in town.
Let's imagine that you own a bar in town, and you want to hold a paint and sip event. The city is not looking to regulate what types of meetings you're having in your business. And so really, the bigger picture and the way to look at it is your business license. And so I have a bar, I have a business license for a bar. We're not regulating, none of this is regulating what you do a part of your bar. Or if, any type of event, let's say I am a bookstore, and I want to host an event to sign books. We're not here to regulate having a book signing event. Or if I have, you know, the perfect example, an arcade, and I have a meeting space in it, we're not here to regulate what you're doing in your meeting space. This is specifically for business licenses that are for an event space. And so really, that's what we're looking at. Does that help clarify?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. And this is going, so this is going to be for new applications? Or are existing businesses going to be grandfathered? This isn't going to get more restrictive on existing businesses?
So we currently have one meeting and event space in the historic main. And I guess I would assume they would be considered a major, and they would be permitted conditionally with these changes. And no, they would not need to go back and get a conditional use for that.
Okay, so it's not more restrictive on existing Main Street businesses that are there today? The primary purpose of this is going to be if someone was to come into the downtown, and they were to say, that building right there, I want to open it up just to hold events. It's going to be an event center. That is what we're trying to target with this code language, right?
That is correct.
That's the goal. Okay.
That's the goal.
Okay. So it's, because at first, when I heard this, I was a little bit frustrated as well, thinking about, I don't want this to affect our current businesses, but it really doesn't. And it sounds like the intent of the language changes are actually to make that more clear, that this is not, this is for the person that comes in looking to open an event center on Main Street. Okay, that's, I'm happy to hear that confirmed. I just, I wanted to clarify that. So, all right, thank you. That makes me feel a lot better.
And I would like to just clarify, because he kept talking about Main Street. To clarify, we're only talking about above the promenades. We're only talking about the spaces on the second and third stories. We're not talking about the first story, right?
That's, so yes, so for minor banquet conference event facilities, we'd be permitted in historic main and then east downtown, so not the promenade.
Do you have any follow-up questions based on that clarification?
Yes. If it was a conditional use, that means that the public would be notified that I'm coming in to open this type of business, and they can come and give community feedback like this to say, that is not a business that we think should be in the downtown. It's not in the spirit of our vision for the city. That is what a conditional permit is.
That is. That's correct.
All right.
All right. Anything further? All right. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
I think you've answered my question. The question was going to be, how does that affect us building our event center on our bank that we just bought? Or as a, whatever we're going to use it for, US Bank? Since it's on the bottom floor and there is no second floor, then this does not apply. Is that correct?
Banquet conference and event facilities don't apply to buildings within the promenade, which the Union Bank Building is within the promenade. However, some of the other proposed uses that we have before us tonight, like visitor center, government administration building, police station, courts, would apply to that building. And remember, the civic uses there are, we're proposing them to be conditional, so they would need to go through the conditional use permit process. And visitor center, we're proposing it to be permitted.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions for clarification before we turn to the community to speak? Go ahead, Councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to move that Councilmember Walker open a roller derby.
Is there a second?
Change the code.
That sounds great. Would you mind going back just a few slides to the membership organizations slide? There we go. I know we discussed this a couple of weeks ago, but it's been a couple of weeks. So could you just re-explain this, please?
So the proposal is to remove from the promenade as an accessory use, membership organizations. So that's the first floor businesses that face Main Street. And then allow membership organizations outright within the historic main. So that could be upper floor above the promenade. It could be some of the areas along Lewis and Hill Street and some of the side streets off of Main Street. So they would now be allowed outright within that area.
Okay, so just trying to think through the practical examples. You mentioned like the arcade. Say the arcade wants to have Girl Scout troops, which is a membership organization, come in and use their area during the evenings, something like that. How is that affecting?
So as your example, the arcade, they have a business license, and they operate as an arcade. Having someone that's a membership organization come into their establishment isn't something that we regulate. It's not that the Girl Scouts are now using that building, and they don't have a license at that building. Does that make sense?
Sure. So then it's perfectly fine, they can do what they want with, I can't say it quite that generically, but they can have those kinds of meetings and not be worried about being outside of the rules?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then I thought I saw one more flag. Okay, Councilmember Belmont.
I know, I'm only supposed to speak once on, so just a couple of things. I am really passionate about this. I really believe that we need to revitalize our promenade. We really need to get stuff going down there. I've been in talks with several people in their 20s just recently, over the last couple of weeks, and really asked them pointed questions about, what do you do on weekends? Where do you go? And they said, we can only go to Lewis and Main so many times for dinner. They're going to Woodinville, they're going to Snohomish. Bringing people downtown is essential. Having something going like a roller derby is just so important, you know? We've got these beautiful signs up, Historic Monroe, and we've got all these cool old buildings. And I just, we've got to get something going for the younger people in our community so that they'll stay here and spend those dollars and go buy and eat and recreate and do all these things. So the other thing I wanted to say is I was just, you know, doing cartwheels, reading under the policy considerations. 2008 Monroe Downtown Master Plan. We talk about, you know, different types of activities essential to the vitality of downtown Monroe. And then we're weaving it all into our Imagine Monroe, and thank goodness we adopted that as a council because it absolutely talks about all of this. It's all supported in Imagine Monroe. It all just fits in, and it's just beautiful how it all works together. So I'm very excited about this, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff on clarification on their presentation, and then we'll go to the community? Go ahead.
Recognize me first?
Yes, Councilmember Heather, and Councilmember Fulcher.
Hey, Mayor Thomas. I'm just reiterating the hours thing that was in response to governmental types of things, correct? Good. As a business owner, I love hearing that you're not messing with hours, so.
Correct. It is just that, going, if we went back to that slide, the footnote eight is only on the conditional uses within the civic use section.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Amy.
All right. Any other questions for clarification? All right, thank you. We're going to go ahead and we're going to open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. And so I've just got some things, I'm going to read the shorter version of what I get to read. So first of all, I'm just going to let folks know that we've already forwarded any written comments you've received onto the city council that were received in a timely manner. And that I'll be asking people to come up and state their name for the record. And like we did before during public comment, just indicate your association with the city would be great. We don't need your address. And there will be a three-minute speaking timeframe again. And this is also not a question and answer session. So I'm going to ask that first, your time will begin after you introduce yourself and provide your area of residence or association with the city of Monroe. Please be respectful of all speakers and of the hearing procedure itself. And please also note that this hearing is an opportunity for you to address the council. It's not intended to be a Q and A or a question and answer session. I'm going to go ahead and call the first person who signed up. And just as before, we do this just to try to make things go faster. Just because your name's not on here doesn't mean you can't speak. Also, each person can only speak once, so there's no coming back after you've spoken, all right? So the first person that we have who signed up to speak is Colleen Vennably. Okay, so if you go ahead and you've already stated your name, your association with the city, then we're at the three-minute.
Hi, my name is Colleen Vennables. I am with Sugar Bell Photography. I am at 106 East Bean Street, so right there on the promenade. And I am very frustrated with the lack of communication that has been given to our business owners. I had not received any information about this unless I was part of a meeting that's with the downtown business association that I've been going to every Thursday, the first Thursday of every month. And I actually walked around and gave people information about these changes that are happening. So because I'm a photographer, I could not host a big group meeting at my studio. That is frustrating. And the lack of, I guess, I can't call, I can't leave a voicemail. I have sent an email in, and I never heard back from it. I am just very, very frustrated with the fact that we are trying to build this really amazing downtown community. And I want to. And I think everybody wants that. But I feel like these new rules that you guys are putting into place are going to really restrict any new business coming in. And it's going to be very frustrating for people. And it's going to make it so they don't want to participate. Like, they're willing to shut down. Unless you are so excited about Monroe, and you're so excited to be a part of the community, why would you invest in it? And I guess that's just my frustration, because I grew up here. I graduated from Monroe High School, my kids go here. I want to be a part of this community, but it's very limiting. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Next person that we have who signed up to speak is Jamie Duxter. Good evening.
I'm Jamie Duxter. I'm a terrible public speaker, so I'll try to make this really, really quick. I sent you all that letter earlier. I know you all got it and read it. I appreciate it. I know that you've touched on a lot of the things that affect my arcade personally. But I want to reiterate that it's not just my arcade. If businesses can't have meetings and spaces used nearby me, I don't get the walk-in traffic. If there aren't people after hours running around downtown Monroe, the crime takes up. So we've all seen that. We've all had to deal with it in all of our businesses. We really want anything that will get more walking traffic down to Monroe. And I guess I have a couple of questions on some of the things you brought up. The 25-hour thing, I know you said it only affects the government buildings, but then are taxpayers forced to pay for 25 hours of employees to be there when maybe that those services aren't needed? That seems like a limiting factor to me as a business owner. I know 25 hours a week would be really hard downtown when there's not traffic around. I barely have my business open that much, and it's because kids are in school, right? They're not out playing at the arcade when they're in school. So I just think that putting restrictions like that kind of locks you into something that you might not be ready for. I also want to reiterate, you made a good point about the 49 people for the minor and major. The differences in those, we already addressed them as business owners when we set up our businesses. We go through all the life and safety checks and all that, and it costs us tens of thousands of dollars that we may or may not have at the time because we don't always know that it's coming up. Sorry, I'm a terrible speaker. But that 49 difference, if we have to address it with the building department, and we have to address it over here, and we have to address it in this place, it's the same thing. It's just, is this person going to answer it in a timely manner? Maybe one of those people is going to drop the ball. Maybe one of those departments is closed for a week. Every week matters when you own a business. If I shut down for a week... Every week matters when you own a business. If I shut down for a week, I'm in a lot of trouble, right? I, I can't afford to do that. And when I need to get those permits through, they need to happen a little faster. This is one more step in the process and I feel like as a business owner, it restricts us a lot. It, it can be the difference between being open and successful and having to shut down. So I just want to make sure you guys are all paying attention to that. And even when you change these zoning restrictions, yes, I have an arcade right now. But if you change the zoning restrictions next year and said I couldn't have an arcade, that still affects me even if I'm grandfathered in. Because I can't sell my building as an arcade that's already set up as an arcade. We put a lot of money into those businesses. We're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars at that point. And if we then have to basically scrap everything we've done and are at a loss at the end.
Jamie, I'm sorry, we've hit three minutes. Thank you. Next person we have who signed up to speak is Jessica Quadry. Good evening.
Hello, everybody. Okay, my name is Jessica Quadry. I am a downtown business owner, which you guys heard me last week too. So for nearly three months, the door of my Main Street store have remained closed to the public. It's been three months without an income to support my family and feed my children. Three months of sleepless nights with countless worries plaguing my mind. In three months, I've dedicated myself to understanding zoning areas, codes, and attending various meetings, planning, city chamber, downtown, to grasp why I was instructed to seize activities that draw people into the downtown area. These visitors don't just stop by my shop. They dine, explore, and spend, bolstering the downtown economy. As you prepare to cast your vote tonight, I urge you to consider the impact on the community members like me, who are committed to fostering Monroe's growth and supporting local initiatives to make it a great place for everybody, rather than having to travel beyond city limits to support other cities that endorse these type of zones. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Next person we have signed up to speak is Chris Pellican. Okay, and then the last person that we have on the list is Jonathan Johnson. Okay, is there anybody that didn't sign up on this sheet that would like to take one of their spaces? I'm saying jokingly. Is there anybody though that would like to come forward and say anything else about the downtown? All right. Thank you very much. I turn to the council. And do any councilmembers now have any additional questions to ask of staff? Go ahead, Councilmember Walker.
I, I just want to make sure that, that I'm doing my best as an elected to respond to kind of what the community's saying. Is this more restrictive to existing businesses? Because from what I'm hearing, it's, it's not. Is that right? I mean, how? The, the way that I'm reading the language, if anything, it is to clarify, to make it better for businesses that exist today.
I would say that it, it is not making things more restrictive. And, and I'll, I'll use my answer to address a couple of things that were comments. Because I just, I know there's been a lot of discussion and I want the folks that were here to take time to come in and, and represent their business and the community in the downtown. The, the two examples about, well, one, the, the, the business that, yes, had, we did not have the event use in the downtown. Well, that's what we're here to do today. So once council makes their decision, if you decide to include that use into the, into the use table. Yes, that there was a period of time where that, that use was not allowed. But that, this situation and other requests that we've gotten over time for event space. And it's like, this is something that we need to address. So we, we are trying to, I know government moves a little slow. But we are, we are trying to be as reactive and proactive with the community to get this done. So the other piece about having events or meetings and there was an example that came up. I had attended that Merchants Association meeting and, and someone had said, well, you know, I have a business. But can I have a, hold a birthday party in, in my business? Absolutely, you can do that. It's, we're not, and, and it's really the intent of why we took that term meeting out of that use. Because it was creating a lot of, of confusion and saying, oh, well, now the city is going to start, is going to start regulating meetings. That was never the intent. The intent was to include these uses, the banquet event and conference uses in the downtown, which didn't exist. And they don't exist in any other of the zones in the city, just, just for, for disclosure. So we're trying to address that. So we're not trying to, to regulate meetings. And Councilmember Hanford had asked about the Girl Scout meeting. Those, those things you can, you can do in your business. The city is not trying to regulate that. Your primary use is already established and you can do meetings and, and, and events that are associated with your, with your business. So it is definitely making it less restrictive and adding uses into the downtown. I really, I hope people can, can understand that. I know it's, it can get a little bit confusing because you don't deal with these zoning code stuff on a regular basis. But that is the intent and that's what we're proposing to do.
Okay. Yeah, and, and just to clarify, banquet facilities are not permitted in the downtown, either on the promenade or on the second or third floors today.
That, that category of uses that we're proposing to, to put into the zoning code today don't exist anywhere in the city.
So remember, the reason why this is before you today is that in the middle of another process we were working on related to the downtown involving the zoning chart. I became aware of there being a banquet use. We had a conversation with staff about whether or not that can be wrapped into the current process. So this is before you today with this discussion because we were being proactive. And we did bring to you the Planning Commission and the Economic Development Advisory Board, the ability to add a banquet space as an allowed use in the downtown. So just, just rewinding back to where we were in July, August, that's how this got incorporated into the discussion today. Correct?
Yes, it is.
You know, you can say no. I know you, so I just want to make certain that they hear that. Okay, so you still have the floor and then I'm going to move on to Councilmember Fulcher and then Councilmember Scarborough, because I saw their flags going up.
I was just going to say when these items, when, when an item from the public comes to us and it's like, that's so frustrating, how can we fix it? We always talk about, oh, this is the timeline. It's usually like six to twelve months in government. So I'm happy that we are approaching the actual finish line of a change like that. Because it sounds like we heard the issue or the mayor and staff did. This is the finish line where we are adjusting city policy to fix a problem. So.
Councilmember Walker, you're right. If this had been a normal process, you would have heard about it. It would have needed to have made it on the Planning Commission docket. And you're right, it could have taken six months. Because you were already working on it and because we received comments from the public, we're now seeing this, I think it's eight weeks from the date that I had the conversation about this at the beginning of September. So that, that is something just to be aware of. At the same time, you need to make the policy choice that's right for the community based on the public comments you've heard tonight.
Wonderful.
All right. All right. We'll go to Councilmember Fulcher and then Councilmember Scarborough. And I keep wanting to go with first names tonight, so this is why I keep pausing.
Maybe catch. Just to be clear, so the businesses downtown. Let's say you've got a coffee shop downtown. That coffee shop can still have a meeting in the evening that doesn't relate to coffee. It just relates to people wanting to meet. Correct? Awesome. Any business downtown can do that. Awesome. Thank you.
Councilmember Scarborough.
My question is, is how does voting yes on this tonight address the concerns of the people who have spoken here tonight? Or does it?
Let me narrow down my thoughts to that. Well, it, it, I think, big picture, it opens the uses up. Like starting with the, the uses that we're proposing to include into the code, the banquet, events and conference uses. So it adds those uses in there. I think that this discussion, I hope, has, has helped to clarify the intent and that the city is not looking to regulate meetings like, like Councilmember Fulcher has just, has given that example. That is not the, the intent of this. And so I'm taking that term meeting out of that use has helped to clarify that. In addition, I mean, we've talked a lot about the, about the specific banquet, conference and event. I know I'm saying those three things in a different order every time. But there's, we're also including the government uses. That addresses, you know, the city has bought a building in downtown so that this helps to lay the groundwork for, for the city to move forward with those civic uses. It also includes the visitor center use in there. And, and we're trying to clarify the uses for the membership organizations as well. So just keep in mind that that, this package includes all of those. I know a lot of the discussion has been specifically about the event. I'm going to say it a different way again, event banquet and conference. Did that, did that answer your question?
Well, I'm not. This is what I would feel like I should say right now. I won't be voting on this tonight because I don't understand the concerns from the audience that have not been, that they feel have not been addressed by what we're trying to propose here. Excuse me. I understand what you're proposing and I don't have a problem with it. But I don't really know that I understand the audience's concerns or the businesses downtown. So at this point, I either won't vote or I won't, I'll vote no, just because I don't understand. And that's, that's my fault.
And, and just to be clear, the, the one individual who had, had commented that their business had been closed for three months. This will resolve their issue. And will include in, in the downtown zoning district, the use that, that they had, had started initially. So that it absolutely resolves that issue. And any, and any other business or someone who wants to open that type of use in the downtown as well.
So basically, we mitigated one out of three concerns here tonight with that comment. And the head shaking from the audience.
Well, I think.
But I don't know about the other two because I don't understand them.
Are, are the concern that the city is not going to allow these meetings and some of the examples that have come up, I, I think are not. It's, it's just simply that's not the case. The city is not going to stop a business from having that birthday party or an event for in their office. So I mean, trying to clarify that, I don't know, I don't know how to address that other than by trying to clarify that that is, that's not the intent.
Let me, let me ask you this question, Director Bailey, the, or, or maybe Planner Bright. The, what the council looked at tonight includes changes to the code that you've seen previously. I think it was last week or the week before. In addition to that, you made edits to remove the word meetings because we heard comments from the public before this meeting that the word meetings seem to suggest that people could not hold like a staff meeting. So that's one of the things that staff has brought you here tonight to address that concern. So the issue of banquets, banquet halls has been resolved, at least with a proposal of having permitted versus conditional use, depending upon the size. The issue of meetings is being clarified and what's been brought forward to you. And so those are at least two items, I think, that staff has brought forward that is different than you saw two weeks ago based on public comment that the city has received.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for helping clarify that. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I think it was Councilmember Fisher and then Councilmember Walker. Did I get that right? Okay, Councilmember Fisher.
Yeah, so I was just going to touch on that and just really simplify things for not only in my brain, but everybody else's. So does this solve the problem for Jessica being closed for the last three months? And then for Colleen, does this solve the problem of her having people in her photography shop as a meeting?
Yes.
So we, we didn't regulate that to begin with, her having a meeting in that space.
Okay, so that was just misinformation. Okay. So I just want to make sure that that is taken care of. And then the arcade, it may not be for this public hearing, but is that like a non-conforming use now where she would not be able to sell that as an arcade later on? Is that something that we can talk about at, at this time?
Yeah, we can talk about that at this time. So I think the scenario, and I could, that she said, was that if we made a change, proposed change in the future to remove entertainment uses from the downtown, which I believe we just added them in a few years ago, that she would not be able to sell her business to somebody else. And what the code says for non-conforming uses is it needs to, it can't cease operation for more than six months. So she could surely sell that business to somebody else. It just couldn't cease operate, it couldn't turn into, or it couldn't go away. So it couldn't go away and move into a different type of business. And then, you know, an arcade was here in the past, I'm going to reopen it again. But that's really hypothetical if, if council decided to remove entertainment from the downtown.
And the proposal here tonight is not to remove entertainment from the downtown.
Okay. So again, just to clarify, going through the discussion tonight, it feels like we have hit the points that we needed to, to make it more likely for them to have a successful business downtown.
That is our hope.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker. All right. Any other questions or comments or a motion? Councilmember Beaumont? Oh yeah, I do need to, so, go ahead.
Thank you. I also am trying to just make sure I understand what I'm voting on. And so Councilmember Scarborough, I'm with you on some of this. For instance, creating definitions for new uses is part of the language, okay? I still have an issue with the major and minor uses. So if I vote yes tonight, is the major and minor uses under treating definition, excuse me, creating definitions for new uses? Does that fall underneath that phrase that is in this language for this motion?
Yes, it, yes, it is.
Okay, so I would be a no because I do not agree with that.
And, and it's in two different places. So there's the definition section. And there's also the section where the use is actually in the, in the land use matrix. So in those two different places, it's different, differentiated between major and minor.
Okay, and I think that still needs some work. I'm not comfortable with that for our business owners. So thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions or on it? And then I will close the public hearing. All right, seeing no other questions, I'm going to close, this is the conclusion of the public hearing unless there are objections. Okay, seeing none, I now turn to the council for deliberation and or a vote. Does council have a motion? There's a requested action on the board for your consideration. Councilmember Walker.
Question for clarification about the motion. So is this, the vote that would take place tonight would just be to approve the first reading? There'd be two more readings after this?
No, there would be a second reading. So if you made the motion that is before you and if it passed in the majority, staff would bring forward for second reading, a final order ordinance for your consideration where those changes that we talked about tonight, the meetings that you saw when you first got your packets, where meetings were taken out would be removed. And so that's what you would see right now, is you would see those things removed.
Okay.
Or added.
Got it. So I, I have only heard ways that this is going to help our downtown business owners tonight, specifically one that is not currently operating because this change has not been made yet. I think that we are kind of getting hung up on just some of the complexities of the language of land use. Still hate land use language. So I want to make a motion to move to approve for first reading ordinance number zero zero two twenty twenty-four, amending chapter twenty-two point two-two MMC Downtown Commercial Zoning District, amending chapter twenty-two point twelve MMC Definitions Updating Allowed Uses Within the Downtown Commercial Zoning District, Updating the Downtown Commercial Zoning District Map for class, or for clarification, Establishing Required Business Hours For Certain Conditionally Allowed Uses Within the Downtown Commercial Zoning District, Creating Definitions For New Uses, Providing Perseverability, and Establishing an Effective Date.
I have a motion from Councilmember Walker, a second from Councilmember Fulcher, discussion on the motion. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
So even if I vote yes tonight, does that mean we're going to look at the fifty forty-nine thing for the second reading?
We, we can bring back, we can bring information back and. We, we can bring back, we can bring information back and, and I, I'm gonna look to the clerk to, I don't know how much, are we, do we reopen the public hearing for a second reading or, or not? I don't wanna speak out of, at a turn on process.
Can they bring back additional information?
Right.
Yep. We could, we could probably bring back additional information on the 49 versus 50 and maybe the rationale as to why 49 was selected, because it might have something to do with the building code or something.
So voting yes tonight would only mean I would get that clarification before the second reading, where if that was not clarified to our satisfaction, we could vote no.
You have the ability to vote yes or no tonight and the duty opposite next week. Yes, however, and we can bring forward additional information as well.
Well, my point is, is I'm not, I'm not against it per se, but I would like that clarified for a final vote.
Understood.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. All right, thank you very much, everybody. And I thank everybody for coming out this evening and providing public comment on that hearing. Thank you. The next item that we have on our agenda is under public hearing also, it's item 5.2, public hearing for the 2025-2026 revenue sources and 2025-2026 recommended biennial budget. And the person who will be presenting on this is Greg Feinmeyer. Yes.
Okay, great. That is on, excellent. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We, Greg and I are going to be tag teaming the first public hearing for the 2025-2026 Mayor's Recommended Budget. And I offered to, for Greg to, I would start by doing the opener and the introduction. So go ahead and provide next slide. And then he'll do the numbers. So the issue in front of you this evening is to have the first of three public hearings on the Mayor's Recommended Budget. And what Greg is going to be covering with you this evening is basically pages one through 34 of the budget. For those that don't have a hard copy, we did make the budget available on the city's website. If you go to the city's website, you can find it under Departments and Finance Department. There's also a hard copy of the Mayor's Recommended Budget available at the library. So if you are looking for a hard copy of the budget, you can also find it there as well. We will be then at the meeting next Tuesday on the 22nd, covering the Mayor's Recommended Budget in greater depth. We'll do a little bit of a recap of the first 34 pages, kind of the big picture overview of the budget, the revenue assumptions, not just for the general fund, which we tend to focus on, but all of the other funds as well. But then diving in deeper into exactly what it is that the Mayor's Recommended Budget is funding at the department and at the fund level. So tonight will be the big picture overview, you'll get the more in-depth review at the next meeting. And then on November 12th, we'll have our third and final public hearing. And then we will also, we've got tentatively scheduled first reading of the budget and the property tax ordinance, which has to be passed before the end of November. And then finally, on the 19th, we have scheduled adoption of the budget and the property tax ordinance. So next slide. So budget highlights, I always think that it is important to talk a little bit about the sizzle that you are getting in the budget. I think this budget, as Greg goes through the numbers, you will notice is different than the budgets that the council has been looking at over the past three years. So the budget in 2022 and then our first biennial budget in '23 and '24. And really what you'll notice is, is that the '23-'24 budget compared to '25 and '26, we actually have less revenues in '25 and '26 than we did in '23 and '24. And that's really a result of the economic stimulus packages that were passed at the federal level, the CARES Act and ARC funding. Now, in Monroe, we distributed almost all of that money out to community members as economic stimulus. We did economic development, we did events, we did human services, most of that money went out the door. But you'll see that, that ending fund balance that we've had over the last couple of years, that's now kind of back to where we historically had it. And that's a big difference. So in the general fund at least, some of the things that we've been able to do in the, over the past three years, particularly as we came out of the recession in 2015 and our finances were improved, and so again, housing development increased and people began spending more money, we're in a different timeframe right now. So one of the budget highlights really is, is that this '25 and '26 budget is built on a set of really risk averse estimates. And you'll see that as you go through. That's why we have less money showing in the way of revenues in '25 and '26 than we did in '23 and '24. Nevertheless, we are fully funding the city's contingency reserves and our debt reserve to ensure that we can pay those municipal campus bonds. So those are fully funded, that's something that the mayor has been committed to ever since he's been in office. It does assume that we have about $12.5 million in bonds and that's to support the biosolents treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant. We're only borrowing a little money. We've managed to save up a significant amount of money towards that project, so our borrowing costs are relatively low. We also have a $2 million loan from the Department of Ecology that you also see listed in the budget. So it was a little bit confusing to me. I kept asking, what's the difference between 15.2 and 12.5? I kept thinking those numbers were transposed, but it's that two additional million dollars that's coming from that DOE loan that's part of that borrowing. We do advance in the Mayor's Recommended Budget some really important projects that have been on the city's council list and part of your strategic priorities, and that's Trombley Park, North Hill Park, which we acquired several years ago and have been working towards first doing a master plan for that park and then going out and trying to find grants to support that project. Those are not as easy to get these days as, again, they happened in the past, so that's going to take us, I think, a little bit longer to complete. The festival lot, that's the purchase of the Union Bank building and the chiropractors office that was mentioned earlier this evening, and we're gonna move forward on that. Rail crossing safety, which we're focused on two projects. There's quiet train is something that we've talked about for a number of years, but then also grade separated, you know, where we are actually separating the train from the roadway grade. That's a very expensive project and takes a significant amount of time, but we're making progress on that as well, and this budget continues that project. And finally, something that's been on the list for a while, the 147th Avenue signal. So that's on 179th and 147th, where the hospital is. That's an area that both has cars and pets, and so that'll be a significant improvement. I know the hospital has been advocating for that for a number of years. We do use our banked capacity and our 1% property tax, and that's to fund the one maintenance worker position that the council discussed in April when you were talking about your strategic priorities and strategic plan. So this budget does include that maintenance worker position, it includes also then the equipment and supplies needed to support that position as well. We are still supporting the public, excuse me, the safety net to support our most vulnerable members of our communities, so human services continues to be a focus within this budget. Much of that, if you've taken a look at the budget, is really grant funded, both at the federal and state level. So we're leveraging, you know, a very small portion of local dollars and really making those local dollars work through grants that we've been able to secure, again, at state, at the state and federal level. We are investing a lot in information technology in this budget and you'll see that throughout. It does include the implementation of a new permit tracking system, some improvements to our onboarding and how we're servicing our, our internal staff members. We're hoping that this will increase efficiency and transparency. We're also working really hard to protect city data and customer data. I think that's a really important investment that this budget makes. Providing opportunities to advocate for our community with state and federal officials, again, that's something that the city council has committed to. A lot of the dollars that we're bringing back, both at the federal level and at the state level, are a result of the relationships that mayor and council members and staff members have been able to build with our elected officials, both in Olympia and in Washington DC. And this budget continues to commit to that. And then finally, it launches the city's new logo, logo and brand. Councilmember Beaumont mentioned Imagine Monroe. All of this budget is built on top of Imagine Monroe. That was something that the council started back with the mayor in 2018 and 2019, and we're finally seeing kind of the end of that process and the fruition of all coming together. So really excited to see that new brand roll out after the first of the year in a number of ways, and this budget makes that happen. Next slide. So just really briefly, this budget is built upon those Imagine Monroe strategic priorities. So as you're looking across this list, you'll be able to pick out a number of things that this budget invests in. When you look at the list, I think one of the things that really struck me again is that we were able to make a lot of headway from, you know, 2018, 2019, kind of through the end of the pandemic and all of that economic stimulus money. We're now in a time period where the economy is slowing down, and this budget, I think, really reflects that slowdown. I think it's important to keep this list in front of you, because I think as we, again, have opportunities to make investments, this list is a really great way to identify where those investments need to be paid. Next slide. All right, at this point then, I'm ready to turn it over to Greg. The color commentary is over, and I think he's just gonna be talking numbers from here on out.
Wow, wasn't that great sizzle? That's Deborah Knight, everybody. I guess I'm the meat and potatoes. It's kinda like I had meatloaf and potatoes at the Traxx Edge Cafe and, and it was wonderful. I had it twice today and it was fantastic. If you haven't been there, go there. So this, the budget, major budget assumptions that we have, first off inflation, inflation, the CPI, we use the CPI U, Seattle Tacoma Bellevue, June over June was 3.8%. That's down quite a bit from what it's been over the past few years. And so those percentages are reflected in the staffing increases for the next year, next two years over the budget. The September IPD, which is the implicit price deflator, and that is also a CPI measure that the state uses in its economic data, was at 2.57%. The assumption is housing starts remain flat over the next two years. I believe that number was about 180 housing starts over the last biennium, and we're making that same assumption this time. Federal Reserve has started to, to lower rates and the, the expectation is that they will continue to lower perhaps one or two more times this year. And the city population is assumed to grow at about 1.2% per year, or about, I think, 240 people. Any questions on that slide? Greg? Next slide, please. Again, there's the 180 housing starts assumption, population, the utility rate increase was per the resolution number 22 to 2019. Water rates will go up 3%, stormwater 10, sewer no increase. Next slide, please. So the aggregate of all, so this includes all of the funds and I think I counted them up, there's about 29 funds, which that's typical for a city. And so for all of the funds, $200 million aggregate budget, which is very similar to the last biennium, the target ending fund balance of $26.2 million. All reserves are fully funded, and that's important. The city has strong financial policies and, and this budget would honor those commitments to fund all the reserves. The general fund budget at 48.6 million, and the targeted general fund ending balance would be about $2.7 million. And so there you have the budgeted numbers in a, in a pie chart. Again, those are the, the same numbers, again, the 200,000, or $200 million citywide, 49.2 million in personnel, and you can see down, down the line, quite a, a busy capital expenditures of about $63 million, but that, that includes the wastewater treatment plant, that includes the finishing up of the municipal building and, and lots of other projects. So lots of good things going on there. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the, all expenditures and, wait a minute, okay, so that's, that's what I was talking of, that's the $200 million citywide, 49 personnel. Yeah, go ahead and skip to the next one. So now we're, we're moving down to the general, general fund budget, and you can see, as typical in a city or any other local government, your largest expenditure is for personnel, cost at 63.9% or about $31 million. Professional services is next, and you can see, you can read the rest for yourself. That's how it shakes out for a total of $48.6 million for the general fund. And this, this details by department, so you can kind of read down the list of all the city departments. The, the largest would be the police department, that's pretty common, at about 45%, followed by parks at about 11% and community development at about 10%. With, with the numbers for like seven years, so you can see kind of the trend line there for all of the city departments over seven years. Next slide, please. This next one shows a, a nice pie chart of the breakdown of general fund expenditures. And you can see that the largest, of course, there's the police is 45%. One thing that stands out is, is ARPA, again, as Deborah mentioned, is at 0% because the ARPA funds ended this year. So there will be no ARPA funding in the next biennial, biennial budget. Next slide, please. So this one takes a look at our general fund revenues, and you can see that one of the large, the largest item on there is, is taxes. Taxes include sales tax, property tax, utility taxes and other taxes. And that makes up for the next biennial budget is estimated, estimated to be $31.8 million. You can see the rest of them going down. So the revenues for the next biennium would be about $41 million, and then combined with the beginning fund balance of about $7.3 million gives you that total of $48.6 million that is available to spend over the next biennium in the general fund. Next slide, please. So this one, this slide deals with sales tax. The retail sales tax in Monroe is 9.4%. 1.3% of that is, is local Monroe taxes, the rest of it goes to state and other, other causes. And there's been a steady growth over the last few years. The estimate for the next biennium is, would be at $13.2 million. That includes about $12 million for regular sales tax, or about $6 million per year, and about $600,000 per year in construction sales tax. So that is about $1.2 million over the biennium. And this is based on very flat estimates, and so we're just assuming no growth over the next two years. It's, it's about the same amount that we expect to receive in sales tax over the current biennium. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So the next thing is utility taxes.
Just a second.
Oh.
Go ahead, Councilmember Scarborough.
So we're building our budget based on the thought that we're not going to have any increase in the next two years.
That is correct. Yeah.
We, well, while I've been serving, we've been taking a risk averse, which means we we want to come up with a reasonable expectation. And so we we will underestimate sometimes we're being safe. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep, it's it's.
Yeah, yeah, and I just wanted to just emphasize what you just said. I appreciate that. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so the next, the next slide shows utility taxes. And you can see over over time, utility taxes have increased. The estimate for the next biennium is $7.3 million. And it's it's expected to increase due to a larger customer base that has grown over time. So with more customers brings more usage with more usage and, you know, brings higher revenues. Next slide, please. So property taxes must be adopted annually. It's the second largest revenue source to the general fund. The the latest information from the Stonemush County Treasurer's Office suggested that the tax base increased by $68.8 million. And so that was a a nice increase. This budget reflects a very conservative estimate of increases over the next two years of $30 million per year. Again, that's seems conservative, but I think it it's in line with with that conservative philosophy of, you know, that that we've been doing. The estimated value of the total tax base of the city of Monroe is $4.86 billion. And that's 2024 for levy in 2025. Next slide, please. And there's the dollar, we kept the dollar. That's, I think that's Becky's dollar. I thought you'd appreciate that. I love that dollar. Anyway, what that attempts to show is that of all the property taxes that you would see on your property tax bill, the typical portion that goes to the city of Monroe is is just under 11%. And the rest of it, there's the breakdown, the state of Washington, the Monroe School District and and all the other task taxing districts and, you know, how that breaks down. Next slide, please. So this just shows the property tax assessed valuation over time. Again, you can see back in 2014, the tax base was at 1.4 billion dollars. And it's currently gone to about $4.8 billion of value. And you can see the revenues are expected to be with using the bank capacity would be $4,275,000. That's using a bank capacity of $154,000. And the rate per thousand would be about 88 cents. Next slide, please. And so this this shows kind of a breakdown of of how that, and and you'll see this when the when the resolution comes forward for the for the property taxes, how how that breaks down. The current levy is $4,270,000. There's a 1% limit of increase, and that's $40,000. There's an estimated new taxes due to new construction of $59,000. And that adds up to the 4.1. And then you can see the bank capacity, which is just under $154,000. That would be added on for the parks maintenance worker and associated equipment. So that the proposed property taxes for 2025 would be the $4,281. Next slide, please. And and this one shows the impacts of assessing the additional bank capacity. And so on a, I guess, we'll take the middle one, on a home value of $600,000, the additional 2 cents of property tax increase would be $12 per year for that person or about $1 per month. And that's that's just the effects of using the bank capacity. The important thing about that is is in a responsible fiscal policy, you use ongoing revenues for ongoing program costs. And this does that. Using that bank capacity gets built in to the property taxes. It's it's there this year, it's there next year, it's there the next year for that staffing that you hire that's going to be there for those number of years as well. So it matches long term revenues with long term uses. Next slide, please. And there's the, that's just showing the use, the park staff and associated gear and equipment. We're getting close. So this this shows the additional debt service. There is $17.2 million in proposed new debt issuance. There's the, within that 15.2 is is the 12.5 that it would be the revenue bonds for the wastewater treatment plant. There's another $2.7 million of Department of Ecology loans, low interest loans. And there's also $2 million for stormwater capital. These are all paid for by revenues without affecting scheduled rate increases. The budget would provide for the reserve funds as required by the bond regulations. So that all bond, all the reserve amounts would be funded to the two and a two and a half years of debt payments. And we come to the next step. So we're to the end of our number crunching. The next step will be the second public hearing with an in depth. So we did the 60,000 foot view. Next week, we're going to dive into the details into each department, each fund in more detail. So we can really dive in. Is there any questions?
Councilmembers, any questions? All right, seeing none, next steps are, oh, go ahead. We like the dollar thing.
Let's see, it is.
You have a PowerPoint presentation in front of you? It's on the PowerPoint? Oh. We should put it in there then.
Oh, it's on page, page 26 and 27 of the of the big budget document.
26 and 27.
26 and 27.
Tell you what, we'll double check. And if it's not in there, we'll find a place to, we'll find a place to put it in there.
We'll we'll make sure it's in there.
All right. So what we're going to do now is we're going to hold a public hearings on the revenue. What's that? Yes. Okay, is there anybody, so we don't have anybody who's signed up to speak? Is there anybody that wants to speak on the revenue, revenues for 2025, 26 biennial budget? Okay, sounds good. So we have nobody that is interested in speaking this evening on this. And this is a conclusion of our public hearing unless there are objections. Okay, the public hearing for the revenues is now closed. And we're going to move on to council member reports. All right, we're going to go ahead and start off with Councilmember Beaumont.
I have no comment tonight. I think I have talked enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker.
No comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Fulcher.
I just want to say nothing tonight. There, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher.
Yeah, I just still want a roller derby.
I heard that. Councilmember Scarborough. Okay, Councilmember, I still want to say Councilmember Davis because everybody's saying no comment this evening and you're sitting in his chair. So Councilmember Gable. No report. All right, Councilmember Hanford. All right. All right, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That would be item 7.1, City Administrator Report Extended Agenda with Administrator Night.
I just have two microphones to answer. Looking forward to the meeting next Tuesday on October 22. We will have a Council P3 Committee meeting. And we will be looking at the Trails Master Plan Update with Ben Swanson. And then Phase 1 Code Amendments with Leanne Barr. For the regular city council meeting beginning at 7:00 PM, we will have the second public hearing on the biennial budget, including the revenue projections and rules of order. Document to the agenda bill? I was like, I don't remember that one. No worries. I'm like Anchorman, I just read what's in front of me on the screen. On the consent agenda, we have accounts payable and accounts receivable, meeting minutes payroll, ordinances amending the downtown commercial zone with Amy Bright. Suspending utility shut offs for November and December with Greg Frimer. Target zero interagency agreements with Chief Jolly and energy service agreements with the Department of Energy Services for design and construction of the wastewater treatment plant, CIP 5. Under unfinished business, we have ordinance 007-2024 for automatic traffic cameras. That's an adoption with Liam McCorkle. And then our announcements and presentations will be the biennial budget presentation, including the capital budget and then department reports.
All right. Any questions on the extended agenda? Oh, we got one more.
We have a special council meeting and a workshop to talk about the 2044 draft comprehensive plan. And that begins at 5:30 PM on the 29th. That's our fifth Tuesday for October.
Go ahead, Councilmember Gable. On the 29th, okay. Councilmember Scarborough, did you have something to report? Okay, anybody else? Councilmember Beaumont?
I just have a question. Is that the day of our tour of the city?
It is, and that's on the next slide.
Oh.
There you go. Just a quick note that for Proposition 1, we do have an educational video that's posted to Facebook. There will be two more additional videos that'll be coming out over the next week and a half or so. So look forward to those. And then including on this slide for the last couple of weeks, that the Orca Recovery Day is actually this Saturday, October 19th, in Sky, Sky Comish River Park. So I think that'll be a fun event for the community. The City Hall Tour is scheduled for Tuesday, October 29th, next two weeks from now. We have two tours scheduled to avoid a quorum. So if you could just let the city clerk know sometime before whether or not you are available to tour at 3:30 or at 4:00 PM on that day. And I understand that some council members can't make either one of those two. And that we're looking to arrange for a separate tour for those that can't make that date on the 29th. And then the special workshop, we need to just verify that we have a quorum available for that. And then dinner will be provided. Again, that's to review the comp plan.
So do we have any? What's that? 5:30, yep. Is everybody able, everybody else, aside from Councilmember Gable, able to make the 29th for the special workshop? Councilmember Hanford?
Possibly at this point.
Possibly, okay. Everybody else, okay? All right, I see a thumbs up, head nods. All right, cool. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the administrator report. Oh, I'm sorry, geez, it says it at the top. I was still thinking of scheduling going forward in my head. All right, so Monroe this week is in your packets. And, oh, we have a joint proclamation right here. There, there are two copies because they're formatted slightly differently. And we're going to leave it to Jody to decide which one looks better in the frame. So this would be for the David Ho's mural that he's put together. I'm going to pass these on down to you and invite you to go ahead and sign them. So I'll just go ahead and send those down. And then if you could just make certain that, Kevin, if you just make certain that Jody gets them when everybody's done, I'd appreciate that. And yeah. I very much would like my pen back. And it's a fountain pen, so just be aware when you're using it. Don't, don't push it down hard, please, because I don't want it bent. All right, thank you. Enjoy. Where's Jeff, where's Chief Charlie? All right, so the other thing too is that, oh, you can still pass it down. Okay. So the other thing that I wanted to note is for us to be able to compensate, Dave, for the work that he did, I just need to make certain that we've accepted it. So I'm just looking to council for a motion to accept the mural. Just to accept the mural for the work that was completed. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Beaumont.
I move to approve the Monroe mural created by David Ho's.
Yes, I think that's sufficient. Yep. I have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont and a second from so many people. I'm going to go ahead and go with Scarborough because I heard him more loudly than everybody else. Yeah. All right, any, any discussion can certainly wait till next week when we do the formal proclamation with David. Or you can say something now. So any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. All right, I think that those are probably the main things for me to highlight tonight. And I know that we still have the, who had Councilmember Hanford?
Really quick, I'm sorry, I was absent last week. I'm not sure if you already, we already canceled the election night meeting?
Yes, it's not on the calendar.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda then. So that was mayor's report. Make certain my pen still works, Jason. Good, it does. All right, discussion item 8.1. This is the Monroe 2044 Review, final drafts of Chapters 3, Land Use 5, Economic Development 6, Housing 9, Utilities and 10, Shoreline and Natural Environment with Planning Manager Tridala.
Thank you. Before I get started on the actual presentation, I have some updates. And I also wanted to address some of the comments this evening. So we've been reaching out to the public since last October. Actually, that's not true, last spring with pop up events, with newsletters. We've done two citywide postcards. I have been working with Hannah Maynard, who uses the mail clip thing to figure out what happened with some of the addresses. It's my understanding that they went to everybody in the Monroe UGA. So I'm still trying to figure that out. We are definitely been wide open to the public. There's been articles in Monroe this week. There's information on the website. So we've really been doing what we can. We've actually exceeded what we put in our public communication plan for outreach for this comp plan. So I did want to address that. The city does not have enough capacity with your current plan. And so we started the land use analysis with the Planning Commission last October. Brought it to you all last November. That was then put into the environmental impact statement, which was also published for everyone to provide comment. We have done workshops here and with the Planning Commission earlier this spring. So I am very disappointed they haven't gotten the notice. We have been trying every way possible. We have been trying every way possible other than putting stakes in the ground, which this is a legislative action. That's not what we typically do, so I really wanted to provide that for you. Questions before I...
Any questions from council?
Couple other things. I have really good news. Three pieces of really good news. The first is the Planning Commission held their public hearing, and last night they adopted findings, conclusions, and a recommendation that will be forwarded to you regarding the draft Monroe 2044 Comprehensive Plan. We have received preliminary comments from the Puget Sound Regional Council, which again is extremely important, because they have to certify our plan in order to receive grant funding. Federal funds go through PSRC, and so they have to certify. They gave us five comments. And based on the conversation, we are somewhat in the minority of the fewest numbers of comments received. One is we need to provide a citation to how we got some of our numbers. There are two requests for additional policies and two requests for additional narrative. We also received draft preliminary comments from the Department of Commerce, which is the other big hurdle that we need to get through. They have a few more comments. Lance and I met with our contact actually earlier this afternoon just to clarify what they were asking us to do. Some of them we can already respond to. There was a comment that we had not included the ADA Transition Plan, which the council adopted in 2021, sorry about that. Another example is they said that we had not provided a map or inventory of all of the future capital facility needs, which is in the first chapter of the system utility plans. So we have this opportunity to go back and say, you need to look in this area. Yes, we addressed your concern. Puget Sound Regional Council, actually, I received their letter earlier today. So that's part of our process, and Attachment 1, excuse, yeah, 1D, of this growing plan, which is available online, captures all the comments that we are receiving from the general public as well as agencies. So these will be included. Okay, next slide. So just what I'm covering this evening with you is a second overview. You've already seen all of these draft chapters. This is the, we're getting closer to finalizing it. We're covering the land use chapter, which is Chapter 4, Economic Development Chapter, which is 6, sorry, I don't remember my numbers very well. Housing, and the important thing, which I sent out to you, and you already had all of the links, and some of you asked for the hard copies, are the appendices, because that is where our show Your Work is included, especially in the housing chapter, and that's where we have the most new requirements from the state, utilities and shoreline. And so just really briefly, I want to walk you through what is included in your packet. Of course, there's the Agenda Bill, and included in the Agenda Bill just gives you some highlights of what we're required to comply with at the state level. And then you have each of the chapters themselves. And then, for example, one of the appendices, it's really important, and we actually will be adding more to, is this Appendix 3A. That is the land use capacity analysis. The last time we discussed this, Alex was with me, and just a reminder, we began with the Buildable Lands Report, which says here's vacant land, partially vacant land, developable land. They also account for critical areas. Based on their analysis, using our own zoning code, they determine how much additional residential and businesses we can develop in the community. Again, as a reminder, we are not looking at doing an expansion to our urban growth area. There are two, yeah, two proposals at the county, which are happening at the county level. If they're approved, we will react accordingly. So that's why I wanted to really kind of bring your attention to in the land use. Oh, and unfortunately, I'm looking at numbers too much these days and found some more errors, which I want to bring your attention to. On page 3-7, Table 3.2, the housing number somehow got messed up, and so I have made Alex aware the information that is in, actually, can you go to the next slide? This slide has been cleaned, triple-checked, quadruple-checked, and so I just want to again remind you, our 2044 allocations begin at the state at the Office of Financial Management, and then they come down through the Puget Sound Regional Council that does the four county, King Pierce, Kitsap, and Snohomish Counties. They determine in general geographies and by county, and then it comes to Snohomish County that determines approximately the people, jobs, and housing by jurisdiction within Snohomish County. And so the 2044 allocations are the initial allocations we were given. We did not challenge them. The city of Monroe did not challenge them, and so those are the numbers that we are working off of. The slide is accurate. So the tables on page 3.7 and 3.11 are being corrected to show this. There's another piece of information I want to make you aware of. The county is considering changing the employment and housing numbers for the unincorporated portion of our urban growth area. It would increase the number of residential units and decrease the number of employment based on all of our land use capacity analysis. To this point, we can accommodate their revisions as well. So I'm relieved, instead of having to open it up as soon as we adopt. Okay, next slide. So again, the changes, this is just a really, the two maps are, the visual of what this mosaic of different land uses is on your right, and the left is illustrating the draft proposed future land use map. It includes the areas of concern that were discussed earlier this evening, the change along Roosevelt Road, the change just south of the hospital, and the change along Chain Lake Road to the mixed use. If you remember some of our previous conversations, we actually are not concerned with the housing and population numbers. We were having a difficult time finding employment. And so that's why we were trying to get creative with different types of land uses that would allow both residential and commercial. The comments that we continue to hear out in the community are, we need to have some type of grocery store for members, community in Monroe on the west side of the city. And so that was the genesis of the idea for the mixed use off of Roosevelt Road. The other comment that we continue to receive out in the public is, people don't want to drive all the way down to US 2 for all of the residential areas along Chain Lake Road. And so that area was identified. There are four parcels there that could support more of a commercial use. And then, see the question?
Go ahead, finish.
The hospital, or the areas south of the hospital, and then changing all of 179th between SR 522 and Main Street to mixed use as well. The one area that was removed was 154th, and that was based on the reality that there was only two parcels that could have been changed, and it would not help us meet our allocation numbers. And then the comments we received out in the community at Planning Commission and here at council.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough?
We keep referring to the area south of the hospital. What concern do we have about what was brought up at the meeting tonight? Can you explain it more in depth, why that area is included? Or should it be excluded based on what's said tonight? Or are we at least looking at the concerns of the people here tonight?
Yeah, they have absolutely valid concerns. By changing the land use designation, the residential, because right now it's a residential neighborhood, and we are looking at making it mixed use, which would allow for commercial and residential development. Residential would become just a standalone house on a lot would become a legal non-conforming use. That being said, the city of Monroe is extremely generous when it comes to residential uses. I went through our legal non-conforming code again, and kind of the questions that you had earlier with some of the existing businesses downtown. It gets to stay. There's, there's nothing that says, when this zone changes, you have to change your property. Now, it will have an impact on the assessed value as that changes. But the concern that is absolutely valid is it will have a potential impact on those existing homes and their ability to, I think the code allows, you can do in addition up to 25%. It continues to be a legal use unless it stops that six-month, six-month threshold again. So that's what the concern is, and it's valid. The problem that we have is the city of Monroe has these obligations to accommodate people, jobs, and housing by 2044. So while we were out asking the people of the community, where are areas that might be appropriate for a change, this area was identified.
So are we looking, or can we look at some area to substitute for that area that can, to mitigate their concerns?
We cannot. The only areas that are still on the map are the areas that were included in the Environmental Impact Statement, and that was based on the input we got from Planning Commission and this body last year to move forward for consideration. One of the ideas that Susan Davis provided, for example, was instead of the northern portion of Roosevelt Road, which is inside the city limits, that's not in the county, look at Dave Hoserlin's property on Roosevelt. That area, we were told not to include for consideration for a change, so that's not an option. The areas that we're looking at, that's basically what we have to consider.
Any other questions?
So is there, I'm sorry, was there a given reason why the Hoserlin property was not to be considered?
Early on in the conversations, there was a concern of the additional congestion at Roosevelt Road and US 2. I feel like there was something else, but that's the one that is sticking in my mind.
I guess what I'm looking for is some reason to talk about that area south of the hospital becoming not a burden, some event to the people that live there. I'm open for suggestion. I'm open for discussion. I find it hard to think that between now and 2044, we can't find some reason there somewhere else to grow without affecting those people. The neighborhood has been here a long time. The people have been here a long time. I would like to see us think about that. I don't know the answer. I only know the question. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay, go ahead.
Thought I'd create a bunch of commotion there. See me? So this triangle neighborhood is south of 149th. Is that right? Am I looking in the right area?
Yes, just south of the hospital, where the water replacement project just finished.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I was looking at the right place, and I'm glad you guys showed up. I think a lot of the times when we have residents come in, they think that we're the head of the spear. And hopefully tonight, you're gonna see that we have to also abide by a lot of rules from elected officials that are way above us from the county to the state. And this is also a frustrating thing for us also, to not be able to make these kinds of decisions, because we get things handed down to us from the state and the county. And it's just so important to be involved in all of those processes, so we can try and kind of figure these things out, these things out. We're constantly always looking for a little bit more control of our city from those areas, or at least I am. I'm not speaking for council. I am looking for those things in cases just like this, where we get put in a spot where we don't have a lot of alternatives. So hopefully, I know I'll continue to kind of work through some of this stuff and see what can be done. But as you can see here tonight, it gets complicated, because then we have our parents telling us what we can and can't do. So it's unfortunate. So just, I really appreciate you guys showing up tonight, and hopefully we can, we can kind of work through this a little bit.
Anything further? I know you still have other slides to go through. All right, go ahead. Oh, okay.
Next slide. So the formats of the chapters have not changed.
Just a second, councilmember Campbell, I missed his flag going up. Go ahead.
It's okay. What's that? Oh, no, it's all good.
I was looking this way.
I just want to be clear, because those numbers, because we've been not in compliance with those numbers before. That's not, I mean, we, you know, those are targets for us to hit, that we're to strive for. They're projections.
That is correct. The city actually has not been out of compliance. We have been very close to hitting our upper limits, but we have actually not exceeded them.
From hitting our upper limits, but we haven't exceeded them. So that's, what we're looking at is the upper limit, or is it?
If you go back, can you go back to the population side? Thank you. So the city of Monroe, these numbers, and again, these numbers get updated every 10 years. We do this exercise every 10 years.
I remember. I've been through this before. So, I mean, that's, that's why I'm remembering the conversation that we had then. And it's just a little bit different than now. So that's why I want to make sure and call it out.
Yeah, I have gone through the 2005, which I was the lead for that project. I remember that one really well. The 2015 occurred while I was clearly not here. But the city has not, has not hit those maximum limits for population, housing, or employment. Unless, I mean, I'm not aware that we've done that.
Correct, but that's, these are, these are the max, is what you're showing?
The 2044 allocation column, that is the maximum that we are being asked to achieve.
Correct. So we can be less than that.
Oh, I would be cautious about that, but, you know.
The answer is yes, though.
I would say, I know the mayor has voiced concerns before about Puget Sound Regional Council, because this is kind of the...
Oh, no, I totally get it. Totally get it. But the answer is yes.
So to clarify, we need to plan for that number.
Correct.
Whether or not we hit the number is a different question.
That's what I'm trying to illustrate.
Yeah, we just need to plan for that number, which means we need to have enough of the right colors on the map in order to hit the right densities, in a theoretical sense. The fact that we do or do not achieve that number is a different issue. But we need to demonstrate that we can achieve that number on that day.
Deborah really wants to talk right now.
I do, because I think we need to be careful about the word "need to" versus "required." We are required to plan for this number. This is the number that we are required in our plan to show both how we're going to accommodate the population and the housing. Do not deviate from these numbers if we want plan compliance. I've worked for a city that chose not to have plan compliance in effect for state grants. You can be held accountable in front of the Government Administration hearing board, which I think some members of this council have experienced that before with the land use issue. So I just wanted to be clear about the word "need to" versus "required," which is the challenge, as Turtula said earlier, because within the urban area to which we are limited to planning for, accommodating the employment numbers is where we have really struggled. And it requires us to plan for mixed-use development in areas that I think any of us on the ground here normally would not think that that would be an appropriate place for mixed-use development.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything further, councilmember Campbell?
Nope, that's what I was looking for.
Perfect. Councilmember Walker, and then councilmember Scarborough?
So earlier in this, in a prior presentation, Anthony and I, I just have constantly reminded of how heavy-handed the state is and how wrong some of these situations are. I wish more people knew that cities aren't allowed to raise property taxes more than 1% per year, not even 1.2% per year, because of, even if a city was to keep up with inflation. So instead, we have to put it into... So instead, we're, we have to put it into things like utility taxes or some other ways that the city is the bad person, when in reality, the state is forcing the city to be the one that has these effects on its citizens that none of us want to, and there are peers. So with the comp plan, again, the state is saying, zone your city in a way that you can prove that you could accommodate this number of jobs and this many people and housing units in 20 years, or for these projections 20 years out. If you don't do that, if you don't color your map right, you might not be applicable, or you might not be eligible to receive projects or grants like the ones that got us, the flashing pedestrian beacons out there for our kids to cross safely at schools. So these are the unfortunate situations that cities are put in. I have a question, Kate. There is a map somewhere in the PowerPoint about redevelopable land. Within the area that they are talking about, I think there's about four or five parcels that are redevelopable?
Yeah, it's actually not in the presentation, it's in Appendix 3A. And again, I want to reiterate, the process we've gone through, we only started with the buildable lands, which took into consideration vacant, partially vacant, redevelopable, all of our critical areas, but our next step was putting it in the urban footprint modeling, so we could figure out if we could accommodate, because getting at what's been said is, we have to show our work that, in theory, I'll put it that way, that we can hit these numbers. So I'm going to, so it's on pages in your packet. Pages 185, 184, oh, nope, sorry, 185 and 186 shows that there are a few parcels that have the potential for redevelopment, but this is prior, I want to be very clear, this is the buildable lands, this is prior to us taking it to the next step for analysis.
Okay, gotcha. Because I was just trying to think through, from some of the comments earlier, I was trying to think through, okay, I was happy to see that there are only a few parcels in there that are redevelopable, because at least as a resident, as a human, I'm thinking, It will not be a new, it will not fall under a new taxing level because it is in a new zone, right? You're just saying that the assessed value could be different, because some, there was a mention of the properties will be taxed at a different rate, and that's not my understanding.
So I am not an expert in that area. The change in land use designation could impact their assessed value. Taxes, you know, I can get you more information, but the assessed value will change, and taxes are based on assessed value and levies and such.
Got it. That's all for now. All right, thank you. Councilmember Scarborough?
Basically, on what you've said, your comment is based that this is showing that we can achieve something by 44.
Correct.
But we need to do it now, because we're doing the 10-year-out thing.
Correct.
And I would assume that the concern is that the new designation would assess the value at a higher rate, causing taxes to go up? Okay, but you're saying, what you're saying is, it may not happen until 44, but that doesn't mitigate the concern of the people who live there for higher taxes. Is that what the concerns are?
I think that's part of it. My suspicion is they're also concerned that if they get developed, so when we're having some of the earlier conversations at council, you'd raised the concern, I don't want to be forced out of my house.
Sure.
And so my suspicion is that there may be more developer pressure on these properties if they are changed in their land use designation and zoning. So it's not just necessarily assessed value or taxing, but they might also feel pressure to sell their property. If one sells and it develops at a three-story building opposed to a single story, that would also be a concern.
But to help them mitigate their concerns about, at least if it were bought to be developed into a three-story entity, presumably their value of their property would be worth more money, so they could sell for more money if they wanted to or had to? Is that a correct assumption?
I believe it is.
Anything further?
I thought I can think of right now.
Okay, sounds good. So she's still got some more presentation to go through. Are you okay with us continuing with the presentation and then opening it back up with questions? About how many more slides do you have?
I just have a few.
Okay. So we're going to go ahead and we're going to continue with the presentation, and raise your flag if you've got an item for clarification. Okay, let's go ahead.
Okay, so the next section after land use is the Economic Development Chapter. Again, this is an optional one, the City of Monroe has chosen to include that since 1994. There's really not significant changes in this year's update, other than updating the existing conditions. We did some additional land use analysis as part of the land use. There was extensive outreach with the Economic Development Advisory Board. One of the biggest change is this plan now also includes the SWOT analysis, or strengths, opportunities, weaknesses, and threats, and there are new goals and policies associated with that. So the draft chapter does not look significantly different than what you saw a few months ago. Next slide. Housing, again, this is where we have seen the most substantial number of amendments to the Growth Management Act, and a lot of them happened in the last three years. It includes, we have to do analysis of racial equity considerations. This is new for us, we haven't done that before. There is additional emphasis on income, and so Monroe has always included analysis for affordable housing, but the state took it to the next level this round and said, you shall accommodate. And so the table on the right underneath the pictures, that shows how the City of Monroe can accommodate the number of residential units by income band, and these numbers were derived through a cooperative collaborative process through Snohomish County tomorrow. If you remember, last year I came to you and said, here are three possible methodologies that we can use. The city chose to support the one that was finally used, which was the hybrid, which resulted in this number of residential units. I do also want to acknowledge, if you count the number of units here, that is actually higher than the number of housing units in the initial targets, we can still meet this number. This is one of the items that the Puget Sound Regional Council identified, and so we just need to clarify, yes, we acknowledge, this table is telling us we need more housing units, but it is, this process occurred after those initial targets were established. So the city can show, we have done our due diligence, and I think that's part of the reason we only had five comments from PSRC in their initial review. So in your document, it has the draft housing chapter, it has the housing, the HAP Housing Action Plan, which you adopted a couple of years ago, that was also getting at attainable housing for different levels, trying to get creative of different housing types. The next appendices is the racial disparate impact analysis, and that complies with the new requirement. Then we also have the emergency housing analysis, and that's that small table in the middle. It shows that the city can accommodate shelters and emergency housing. Your table or your appendices shows the analysis that we went through to show how the city can meet that number. The next chap, or the next appendices is the inclusive analysis. This was done at the very beginning of the process, these are the colored tables, and because of this analysis, the results are the new goals and policies that you will see throughout the document, addressing the areas that the consultant team felt we might be trying to make it more equitable for the community as we grow and plan and change. And then the final appendix is the middle housing analysis. Anita Marrero brought this to you last year, and it looks at different scenarios for trying to provide more and different types of housing throughout the City of Monroe. Next slide. Utilities, this section typically includes water, sewer, stormwater. We have chosen to acknowledge that these utilities are in the capital facilities plan, because that's all of the city owned, operated, we fund them, and so instead of duplicating that information, we've just stated it is in Chapter 8, and that will be part of your last presentation in a couple of weeks. So we have focused on the other items that we are required to include. This chapter really is not different, we've added a few policies, we need to add one more, there was a change in state law that had to do with organic solid waste, and so we will need to address that, that was one of the comments we received today. This also includes information from the Snohomish PUD, Puget Sound Energy, focus on electrical services. Next slide. And then, oh, did I, I did it again. All right, so before we get here, the shoreline environment, I just want to, that part was part of this evening's conversation. Again, it includes, so this is another one where there's been a lot of change, but we're not required to comply with some of those requirements until 2029, and that's the climate change. However, we are required to start doing some of the analysis of vulnerabilities, and I'm very happy that, unlike some of my other jurisdictions, the treatment plan is not in the flood plane, because cities are being asked to start figuring out how to remove or move those critical infrastructure out of areas that flood frequently. So our shoreline and natural environment start adding some narrative, as well as goals and policies, and it does include one specifically that we will complete the additional work by 2029. It includes the shoreline management program that you have already adopted. The other information, the appendices, there's some watershed analysis, there is some climate change analysis, and I think that is everything. So not a huge change from your existing plan, but a lot more reference information. So that brings us to our last slide. Again, the Planning Commission did take final action last night. On the 29th, we will provide you with information on the transportation plan, the parks, recreation, open space, and trails plan, and then finally, the capital facilities plan with all of the appendices. Your public hearing is scheduled for November 12th. We have already provided notice out there, we will again do our required publication. If I have money in the budget, I will see if we can do yet another postcard, hearing the concerns. And then I am hoping that you'll have discussion and first reading on November 19th, with final action on December 3rd. You actually have two additional meetings in December, but I'm hoping we don't need to go that long, and I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
All right, council, additional questions? All right, I thank you very much.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've had a lot of members of the community involvement too, so I, you can see the Planning Commission, the Economic Development Advisory Board, I wouldn't be surprised if CHSAB were part of it, Parks Board, and the multiple community meetings and workshops we've had. So we've had a lot of people involved in this, and in addition to the staff, I really appreciate everybody that's put so much work into this, also you all in council, council members, I know that Councilmember Beaumont has been turning in some suggested edits and things like that, that are Scrivener's Errors and Ways to Word Things and everything. I appreciate all of the thoughts that everybody's been sharing, so thank you. I think we have no need for an executive session this evening, and unless there's an objection, we will be adjourned. All right, thank you all for your service, have a great rest of your week, we are adjourned.